May I have a motion to return the regular board meetings to public session? Mr. Bornting, thank you. Mrs. Van Plaatsen, second. Is there any discussion? Do you mind? Alan Fairbairn? Post. Motion carries unanimously. Good evening, everyone. I call the regular board meetings of order. All board members are present. In accordance with Executive Order 202.1, please be advised that members of the public will not be permitted to attend the board meeting person. This meeting is being conducted as a webinar. The public has the option to register for this meeting. This is Katmar Fopner. Would you please state us in the hunch of allegiance to the law?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of Washington, a one nation, on one ground, indivisible, with a unity, just as we are.
Is there a motion, please, to approve the agenda as we answer? Mr. Bornting, thank you. Ms. Katmar Fopner, second. Any discussions? Do you mind? Alan Fairbairn? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. McKenna, at this time, I turn it over to you for board recognition.
Thank you very much, Ms. Leatherboro. Today, we have two recognitions we'd like to make. First, this evening, we'd like to recognize Mr. Thomas Neff, an art teacher at Dodge Elementary School, who was inducted into the National Teacher Hall of Fame. At this time, we'd like to play a video to honor Mr. Neff, his dedication to the district, and celebrate this incredible career accomplishment.
It's very flattering, and it's really affirming that what you're doing is being a positive influence in students' lives. And I'm not winning this award alone. It's my colleagues who have helped me to be a better art teacher, figure, something like what I've done. My biggest influence was my mom. She always showed the lesson of whatever you touch in life, make it better and improve it. Whether it's a relationship, or your partner, or organization, try to impact it even better than what you found it. What's out there is always changing. Materials, tools, new ideas, attending state national conferences, special development opportunities. You know, if you intend something and it impacts one aspect of what you do, then you're making it better. Dodge is a wonderful place to come. I really look forward to it. Not only is it cool, but my art room is really like a second home. You know, it's just you come to life when I enter the art room. I absolutely love what I do. But it's just really that interaction. That's just bonding, there are smiles, and in normal, you're getting your hugs, and just helping them to succeed. That's what makes it really worth it to me.
Congratulations, Tom. Well deserved, man.
Congratulations, Tom. We deserve it. Congratulations, Tom. Congratulations, Tom.
Congratulations, Tom.
Congratulations, Tom.
Congratulations, Tom. We're very proud of you. Next, we would like to recognize Williamsville North Senior Christian Brand, who earned a perfect score on the ACT. We'd like to share this video, which features North Principal Bob Cuniglio and Christian, explaining the significance of this educational achievement.
Less than 1% of students score a 36. It's an extremely rare incidence. Four times that many students get 35, so it shows you how small the number is of the amount of test papers that they actually score a 36 on the ACT. Sometimes in life, things are just going to happen for you, and you're never going to know what it is, and you're never going to know when it's going to come, and you're never going to know like what the situation is going to be. For me, it was I took the ACT, and all of a sudden, I got this good score, I got a 36. I never expected that ever. And I was kind of just like blown away at this whole thing happening. At the end of the day, it does make me feel good in my heart, because, you know, I did put the work in. It's nice to finally reap the benefits. I've been into music my entire life. That is definitely my area of expertise, my passion. Your recital is the same thing as a test. You put your work and you put your knowledge into what you have presented in front of you. Playing music and learning music has given me so many benefits in terms like mentally, it's just made me so much more of a better person.
A 36 on an ACT is a huge accomplishment. I think Christian's mind is only a small part of the entire person he is.
You know, and our motto is learning today, meaning tomorrow. He's trying to do both right now. I think he's a great representative of all of mine, our tradition, stuff like. You just gotta be the best person you can be. And you know, I'm like, in a way, I really know people. You gotta be, you know, a kind, genuine person, and that little comes to you. You know, I mean, that sounds really cheesy and cliche, but that's my experience, is that all of a sudden, you know, I was lucky that I got this good score, and I was lucky to get all these opportunities through Williamsville and through all these other outlets, extra curriculums that I pursue. So I think just keep an open heart in that sense, and you know, the goodness will come to you.
Congratulations, Christian. We're also very proud of you.
Are there any board acknowledgements? Yes, Mr. McKenna?
Thanks. I would like to acknowledge our middle school principals and teachers, and welcome back fifth and sixth grades today.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. McLeary, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Welcome to all who have registered to observe the regular Zoom board meeting. For Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. At two and a half minutes, I will notify you that there are 30 seconds remaining. At three minutes, I will interrupt and thank you for your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. We would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. Thank you for your cooperation. For those who have pre-registered for public expression, I will call on you, and if there is time allowed, I will call on those interested in addressing their board by raising your virtual Zoom hand. First person on our list is Meg Buscello.
Hi, thanks for the time. I appreciate it. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Um, it's interesting that you're not going to allow a conversation back and forth, since I feel like the families have requested repeatedly to have a conversation with our board president and vice president. Closing the schools the way that they were done, and calling the police when the children came on your super, you know, the campus. It's been really disappointing. We heard secondhand from the news that you're going to put the acting superintendent on a more permanent basis today. We would request, as families, that you treat us like the parents and the guiding forces for our children, and not ignore us. The video chats have not been informational, really. We appreciate the efforts, but the fact that nothing has been done with our families in terms of communication, and Mrs. Leatherboro, I'll direct this to you. The standardized emails that you've returned to us without any kind of real communication has been very disappointing. Our principal's been wonderful, but we want to know when our kids are going to get back in school. There have been repeated letters from our doctors. The American Medical Pediatric Association has stated that it's not good for the children to be home. The WHO just changed their policy on lockdowns. So if you don't talk to us and tell us and communicate about the plans moving forward, other than in a unilateral way with our children hiding behind, you know, them in a building, how are we going to know that we can trust you moving forward? I'd like to give you a minute to respond, Mrs. Leatherboro, and Dr. McKenna, I would appreciate if you could address us directly.
So this is a meeting held in public. It is not a public meeting, and as Dr. McLeary just read the public expression statement, the board will not be engaging in a dialogue tonight. However, we do invite you to attend our committee forum on Saturday.
Okay, I feel like that's, this is the first time since the beginning of September that you've allowed the parents to get on a call with you. You've not invited us in the building. You've not had any conversations, so please don't hide behind policy. These are our children that are locked up in their rooms since September, actually since last March. So don't hide behind policy and say that to us.
30 seconds.
Oh, well, thanks for the notification, because you've given me two and a half minutes, and my kid goes to school in Williamsville. We would appreciate some transparency. This has been very disappointing for the way that you've treated our children and us. Acting Superintendent, you have nothing to say?
Thank you. That is your three minutes. Ms. Buscello, could you please state your first name?
It's Meg.
Thank you. Our next speaker is George Demopoulos. I'm sorry, we're having technical difficulty. Apparently, you have a older version of Zoom, and so it's not letting you proceed to make a comment. We might be able to come back to you. If you drop off and upgrade. So unfortunately, we will move on, but we will certainly remember that you didn't get a chance to speak because of technology. Our next speaker is Jack Flick. Mr. Flick, is it possible that you would have signed in with a phone number instead of your name? I'm sorry. Next speaker is Karen Ford. Next speaker is Terry King. Hello, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good evening. I'd like to address a couple of issues pertaining to the school budget, and I hope that the board could examine these concerns. I noticed that in August of 2020, the board had approved the hybrid model, or had a presentation where they endorsed that rollout. Now, we're going to this new high flex model with significant increases in infrastructure, Wi-Fi, equipment, that I'm curious as to how the budget's going to handle that increase, and do we have a handle as a board what those numbers are? I noticed that today in the audit report meeting, there was a report that we had actually had a savings of $5 million of expenses in the 2019-2020 budget, where in fact, on page eight, it indicates a $7 million increase, and they spoke about the reserve funds increasing based on the bus sale last year, the revenues received, but I'm concerned that we're spending some of that in our capital budget. One of the things that I noticed that I'd like to get clarified is, in the budget of $199,199,730,000, there's a line item that talks about compensated absence of $24,668,000. And I'm just curious why that number was so incredibly high in 2019-20, when we had the pause order into effect on March 23rd? And we didn't incur, I would think, the normal payroll, although we incurred payroll, but certainly not at a level that increased over the prior year when we didn't have school the entire year. And one of the things that I'd like to really examine is, what was that money for? Because I thought that was allocated for sick time and allocated for leave. And so I'm wondering what happened in that third, or that end of that fiscal year. Also, I noticed in the final audit, there was a $9 million increase in pension allocations over the prior funding year. And then they reported that we had revenue savings of under 2%, where in fact, in the audit, it reports a 3.9% expense increase in this fiscal year.
30 seconds.
So my concern is, with all of these unfolding costs that we're bearing, hiring tonight, raises that are being given out, both superintendents being paid, do we really have fiscal control going into this galactic year, ending it? And will the taxpayers be burdened by these increases beyond the 2% tax cap going into the next calendar year? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Darlene McClay.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. I'd like to first of all emphasize that this meeting is taking place on Zoom, and you're actually having difficulty communicating with us. Do you realize that this is exactly the same experience our children are having now? Because you, as our board, agreed with Michelle Light and the acting superintendent to send our kids home? It's you guys who forced our children to learn on this unstable platform when there's absolutely no logical reason for this. I also second the other comments that Ms. Buscello made, and the disappointment in the lack of communication between the Board of Education, Dr. McKenna, and us as the parents. We still don't know why you guys sent our kids home. We still don't know why our kids are not coming back to school until October 26th. Everything we've heard makes no logical sense. We have asked repeatedly for transparency, and you have all refused. As a Williamsville taxpayer, a parent, and a member of the Williamsville School Taxpayer Association, we deserve to be spoken to. Now, I've spoken to two other superintendents in our area, and they were horrified to see on TV that Dr. McKenna would not even come out and speak to his students when they stood outside his door for a protest. So my questions are actually based around a couple of things. I'd like to know on what basis does an acting superintendent, whose previous experience as a leader was as an elementary school principal only, what experience does he have that he deserves to be paid as the highest superintendent in the Western New York suburbs? Individuals are hired and paid commensurate with experience and performance, and it seems like his contract is completely void of this basics principle. I would think as an assistant superintendent of HR, Dr. McKenna is certainly aware of this. Is the board aware that Jeffrey Hicks from the Clarenceville School District has been a superintendent since 2002, and he earns $215,000? Are you aware that Mark Laurie, who's the superintendent from Niagara Falls, which I believe is the next largest school district, has a minimal budget? He's been in his position since 2016. He returned his children to school. They have barely any internet out there. He set up hotspots. He went above and beyond, and he earns $185,000. Are you aware that Anthony Dave, who is a superintendent from Sweet Home, earns $190? So my question to the board is, what basis are you presenting tonight? The approval of a contract of a salary for $230,000 for Dr. McKenna, whose only position of leadership is an elementary school principal? Lastly, assistant superintendents are contracted employees and not on a tenure track. Why is Dr. McKenna being treated differently, and on what basis is the board recommending and voting tenure for Dr. McKenna tonight? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ready. It appears Dr. Ready is not in attendance. Our next speaker is Jonathan Rich.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. McLeary. I want to talk for a few minutes about communication. Last month, Mr. Lemay, you were nearly banging your shoe on the table at Dr. Scott Martzloff about a lack of communication. I hope you remember that very clearly, because we all will. Yet several weeks ago, when we met outside the PTSA meeting to protest a lack of forthrightness in our district, you scampered away from a group of passionate students and parents faster than I've ever seen anything scamper in my life. This is the same meeting where John McKenna made sure to find his way there an hour early before any of us gathered to greet him, which is interesting, because we were told that by the PTSA, that he wasn't going to be at the meeting at all. In the last month, in fact, Dr. McKenna, you've used the PTSA, student government, and professionally edited videos. You've refused to talk to the media, refused to return phone calls, and it turned your back literally on parents. Instead of speaking with the news media, the district decided to prevent them from being on district property when our students, our children, were making themselves heard. Mrs. Leatherboro, I am sure you agree that no one should be prevented from being on school property if they are there for a student. Instead of getting answers from our leadership, we've been forced to reach out to leaders in other districts, at the county level and at the state level, to try and figure out what's going on. We've heard awful things. We've been forced to talk to principals and teachers behind the scenes, because they are afraid of retribution if they're found out talking to us. So, I mean, to me, it's a very stark degree of hypocrisy. You know, communication is important, but the school PTSAs can't meet face-to-face with board members. Communication's important, but maybe we should cancel an important community forum at the last minute. Communication's important, except the district refuses to respond to Freedom of Information requests per state law. Communication's important, but interestingly, no wits mail was sent out for this very board meeting. Mr. Lemay, how important is communication to you, really? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. At this point, I do not see anyone else who has requested to speak during public expression. We have... I apologize. There is one other person. Gary Warrenhader. No, Mr. Warrenhader. And just because we had said we would, I'm going to go back and see if George Demopoulos has been able to sign in.
Hello there. I'm on a new device. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
That's great. You know, believe it or not, let me just say this first, I am a student, and so I'm kind of feeling all this stuff. But believe it or not, I'm learning through this higher model, and it is working. I'm going to say it's working fabulously. I don't, I'm not aware of any major glitches that caused me to not learn. The teachers are doing great in learning. What I just want to talk about is, not this reopening, but the reopening of schools 100% post the vaccine. Do you think, do you think if a vaccine is released before the end of the school year, perhaps all students, I believe in phase three of distribution, will get vaccinated? Could we return to school before the end of the school year, given that the world is safe? Could you, do you want to answer that?
Thank you, George, for your question. This is a public expression portion of the meeting, which means we're not able to answer you at this time. But later on in the meeting, perhaps when Dr. McKenna gives an update or a committee of the whole, we will try and address your topic.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'm gonna finish this out by saying some nice things. First off, congratulations for that amazing student at North High School for the 36 ACT. I believe you did a great job in raising that kid in the district. Tomorrow's the PSAT, and it's supposed to come out in December, which I'll be taking them. And when they come, it's supposed to come out in December, you will see how the students, how good the students are, and how much this online learning is working. I think it's working beautifully. Thank you. I like talking to you.
Thank you, George. We appreciate your comments. At this point, I see no other hands. This would conclude public expression.
Thank you for all of our speakers tonight. We're moving on to our audit presentation at this time. Dr. McKenna and Ms. Buscello, I will turn it over to you.
At this time, I will turn it to Mr. Wintersky for the audit presentation.
Thank you, Dr. McKenna, Department of Education. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Carl Widner. He is the partner at our audit firm, Drushmoleki, and he will provide a summary of this year's external audit, financial audit, of our financial statements for the year just ended, June 30th, 2020.
Good evening, board. Thanks for the introduction, Tom. As you mentioned, I'm here tonight to present on the results of the external audit for the financial statements of the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. Just a couple hours ago, I did meet with the audit committee to go over the same presentation, but at a greater level of detail. So in this meeting, we do put together a small slideshow, a short slideshow, to walk you through the progress of the audit, how things went, and also try to provide some high-level financial highlights of the district's general fund for the fiscal year. So we can follow along the slideshow. It worked earlier. There we go. To start quickly, a recap on why we're hired and the role that Drushmoleki plays for the district. We're hired as your external auditors. Annually, district management manages district money, they make budget decisions, collect revenue, and spend. During the year, they're maintaining a general ledger to track the accounting of those funds. Annually, they put together a financial statement, which is one to summarize the year's activity. Now, when your readers or users of the financial statements go to look at that information, they like to have a third-party independent opinion that those financial statements can be relied upon, that they are reasonably stated and fairly represent the financial position of the district at June 30th, 2020, and the activity for the 12 months they're in it. That's the role that Drushmoleki plays. We arrive at the district, we work with them, gather information, we assess risk in the different financial transaction cycles, perform a series of tests, and then ultimately, opine on whether we believe the financial statements are fairly stated and can be relied upon. I'm here tonight to conclude that we are able to give an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, where we do believe that the financial statements are fairly stated. that the financial statements are fairly stated. So the products for our audit, what you can expect each year, first off, are those financial statements. So while they are owned by the district, there are those few pages within the report that represent our opinion that goes on our letterhead. Those are the pieces that we own. The financial statements are the property and responsibility of the district. Included within that financial statement is a separate compliance audit over the federal awards that the district handles. So once you receive and handle a certain amount of federal money, there's a separate compliance audit that the district is subject to. Drushmoleki essentially acts as an extension of the federal government and performs that compliance audit. That compliance audit was performed successfully with no fines. We also include a management letter and an auditor communications letter. The management letter is simply a forum for us to provide some observations or best practices to the district. Auditor communications letter reiterates the responsibilities of both the district throughout the course of the audit and us as the auditors, and goes through and reviews to make sure each party upheld their responsibilities in order to have a clean, full scope audit, and we did have that this year. Finally, there is a separate, small financial statement called the Extra Classroom Activity Report, and that reports the individual clubs and activities, student-run programs at the district. That audit is performed under guidance of New York State Act. Getting right into the financial highlights, this is a focus on the district's general fund. That's the lion's share of the activity at the district. So that is the focus tonight. The graph here represents the last five years of revenue and expenditure activity. Your blue is representing revenue or money coming in. Red is your spending. As you can see, revenues have been a bit more predictable than the spending side. They have had a steady increase over the course of the last five years. Expenditures have experienced some more larger ups and downs, some sways. Looking back at the fiscal year 1920, revenues reached $189 million. That's up $4 million from last year, just about $2 million. $4 million may sound like a lot, but when you look at the size of the budget, it really is just a 2% increase. On the expenditure side, however, you saw a decrease of $10 million compared to the actual spending last year. And then expenditures came in at $175 million. And while you did still see the expected or anticipated increases that are tied to contracts for instruction costs such as salaries, while that went up, you did experience some significant savings in transportation, employee benefits, and also transfers out of the general fund to the capital projects fund for local share of capital construction costs. Considering total revenues of about $189 million coming in over expenditures of $175 million, that net difference is just over $14 million this year, and that represents the dollar increase to the fund balance of the general fund. This bar graph represents the last five years of fund balance levels, total fund balance levels at the district. And what you can see, if you look at the 2018-19 up to the most recent 1920, that increase is going to represent that $14 million savings that you experienced during fiscal year June 30, 2020. You went from $73.5 million up to $88.1 million. This graph further segregates your fund balance into two main categories, being restricted and unrestricted. Restricted represents reserves. Those funds are a little more difficult to spend. They come along with, as you guessed, restrictions on how to spend it. The blue portion represents your unrestricted money, which is assigned and unassigned fund balance. What you can note on this slide here is that the restricted portion went up a little over $11 million. So when we saw about a $14 million surplus during the fiscal year, a little over $11 million of that surplus went into these reserves, so they were able to be funded. The most significant area was in the capital projects reserve. Now, the remaining $3 million went into an unrestricted portion of fund balance called assigned. On this slide here, we break down the unrestricted portion, which on the last slide was just about $20 million. That's further broken down into unassigned fund balance and assigned fund balance. The remaining $3 million of that $14 million surplus during the year was allocated to assigned fund balance for encumbrances. The blue portion, or your unassigned fund balance, came in just under $8 million and was pretty consistent with the prior year. Finally, each year, we do touch on Real Property Tax Law, Section 1318, in which the district is subject to comply with a 4% maximum of a certain type of fund balance. In the district's case, unassigned fund balance shouldn't exceed 4% of the budgeted appropriations for next year. That $7.9 million maintained by the district reported at June 30th, 2020, is in compliance. It's right at that 4% level. Overall, I do have my contact information here. If anybody had any specific questions, I'd welcome you to please reach out to me or my staff. Charles Stradier was the manager on the job. His information is also provided. But overall, you know, it went very smooth. And in a year where we couldn't really guess how it was going to go, I was pleasantly surprised. I really think the district staff, Mr. Maturski and all his staff, really deserved some commendations for the extra effort and the cooperation that it took to facilitate an annual external audit throughout a COVID pandemic. But it went through. We're still going to issue by the October 15th deadline, which the district strives for. And really, we received full cooperation from everybody at the district, and we're happy to work with you for another year. If there are any questions tonight, I welcome them. If not, thank you for your time.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you so much. Oh, Mr. Maturski, I'm sorry.
I just have a general question. It's not specific to our particular budget. I know that in the past, the state comptroller has said nasty things about our school district because we are at the 4% level on those assigned fund balances or on assigned fund balances. Basically, our reserves are too high, is kind of the advice that he's given us in the past. And from our point of view, at least, it seems that that's a good thing, to have money in reserve. I just wonder if you have any general statement?
While it's not something that we would put our opinion on, it definitely is a district-by-district philosophy. How do you like to... Do you like to run the risk of having one year that could really go off of what you budget, and then you're in trouble? Or, as Williamsville District has maintained, to maintain reserves at a higher level so that you can weather the storm when COVID comes around, emergencies? It's our experience that in state audits, that it will be either you have too much or you don't have enough. I don't think anyone's ever really gotten it spot on, but it really is just a preference of board philosophy for how you maintain fund balance levels.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are moving on to our consent agenda approval. We're going to separate out one of the items. May I have a motion, please, to move the Certified Staff Consent Agenda Item 6A for separate vote due to a prior request by a board member? Mrs. Viger, thank you. Dr. McCleary, second. Any discussion on you? Need none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion, please, to approve Consent Agenda Items 6B, Classified Supports Staff Personnel, 7 Business, and 8 Special Needs and Student Activities as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Mr. Viger, second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion, please, to approve Consent Agenda Item 6A, Certified Staff Personnel as presented? Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Mr. Lemay is the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none of discussion. Mrs. Viger. Dr. McKenna, can you please explain for some of the positions that we have the start date, but the end date says to be determined? Are these appointments based on the additional positions that we need now? And what would cause these positions to end? And how has this been communicated to the people that we will be observing?
Well, these are temporary appointments. And it was based on the COVID situation. We have teachers that have taken leave, some short-term leaves, some long-term leaves. So because we don't know the duration of some of these leaves, what we have to do is put it as a "to be determined." And we did talk to those people when we brought them in and explained what temporary status is for them. And in this COVID time, we do have interesting situations that are subject to change. That's why we brought them in as temporary personnel.
Thank you, Harvey. Thanks, Lady Natt. I do have one other question regarding Item 6A. There are technology integrator positions on this end. I know that we've heard a lot from the community about our reliance on technology at this time that we're seeing with our students and remote learning, and now into our high flex model. Can you please explain what the role of the technology integrator would be and how this will impact the teaching and students in this area?
Sure. This is one of the things that we heard from the committee when we were putting the relaunch plan together about having technology support to, you know, be there to support our teachers in this time when we know that technology is incredibly important in our classrooms. So a technology integrator is someone who is a teacher, and then they're going to become the full-time instructional technology support person for the teachers because we know that there's a lot of technology integration with the new programs that they have to do. So this is a full-time person who'd be in the building to help and support our teachers through this process. We have a plan that we want to put together. So we have the technology integrator, a technology facility, which is a stipending position, a team leader position for our buildings, and a computer support technician, CST. So we'd like to have each building to have those three staff onboard to help and support during this time because, as you know, technology is critically important to the delivery of instruction right now. And if things go down or if things need support, we can get support right away to help our teachers and help our students.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that because I have heard some feedback, especially last spring, but even starting this year, of some of the difficulties that both teachers and students are facing. So to be able to support our teachers through that, hopefully, make this process smoother.
Yes, they came through, I would say, with the committee that we put together, too. If we're going to have as much technology integration right now, we do need to support to make sure that it's as smooth as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Vansys?
Mine is really for both 6A and I'm sorry, about 6B as well. We did see a large number... We're hearing that we saw a large number of resignations, but then a large number of staff being hired based kind of off of Mary's temp positions. Can you just explain what the influx is? Is that also a COVID-related?
Yeah, these are COVID... What we're having now is the staff that you see is from COVID. And some of them are still with the leaves, and there's people that have taken leaves of absence, and so we're filling some of those positions right now. And that's what that is about. It's just really through this transition, through this COVID phase, is why we have some additional staff in this time.
And I know I mentioned, I'm not sure if this is the exact place, but just to request, if the rest of the board is in favor, that when we do see a large number of shifts, whether it's resignations or hirings, if we were to be aware of that before the monthly packet comes out?
Absolutely. I think it's only fair, and you can tell on that.
Okay. Thank you.
And motion for 6A, all in favor? Proposed extension. Motion carries 801. I would like to thank the following retiree for her service to the district, Joanna Coles, High Middle Teacher 8 for 24 years of service. Congratulations, Joanna. Item 9 is Minutes. Is there a motion, please, to approve the September 6th special board meeting minutes? September 7th, emergency board meeting minutes? And September 8th, regular board meeting minutes? Dr. McCleary, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Catherine Goldner, thank you. Are there any corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item 10. We want to combine 10A, 10B, and C together for a vote, and then we can discuss them if needed. May I have a motion to approve the following agenda items? 10A, the Legislative Liaison, Erie County Association of School Boards; B, the NISBA 2020 Bylaw Amendments and Resolution Voting Resolution; and C, to rescind references for the NISBA Dyer Award nomination as presented in the conference? Mrs. Viger, thank you. Mr. Bornstein, second. Is there any discussion on that? I just want to mention for the NISBA voting resolutions, we're authorizing, we're going to be, Mr. Lemay, to go ahead and vote on these resolutions. Can I be? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Right, 10D is our community forum. So our community forum is not canceled. It will be held on October 17th from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It will be held as a webinar, and there will be information coming out tomorrow to register for that event. We didn't want to send out two different registrations, one for a board meeting and one for a community forum. We have to be confusion. So there will be a flyer with information and an agenda and an opportunity for anyone in the community to register for this event. Board members, there is a draft agenda in your board packet. Is there any discussion about this Saturday's one? Dr. McCleary?
I would just like to point out that the forum is indeed the opportunity for us as board members to engage in a dialogue. We had conversations earlier about public expression being one-sided, which is one of the reasons why community forums are very important because people who choose to come virtually to the community forum and ask us questions, you will have the opportunity to hear our answers.
Thank you. That's an excellent point. And I just want to point out, too, you know, we are volunteers. We do give up quite a bit of our time even here tonight during the class game, but we're happy to come in for a community forum this Saturday. And we really have all nine board members who have committed to its own role, taking time away from our families to do that because it is important for us to engage with our community. We welcome our students. We welcome our parents. We welcome our staff as well. So I hope you will join us this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and you'll be able to register for a Zoom webinar. The information should be coming out by midday tomorrow. You know, I'm coming in tomorrow morning to volunteer a little bit more time to work with Mr. Filipowski on getting that flyer out for you. So thank you. All right, so Item E, under the President's Report, there are important dates for upcoming events that are happening through Erie County Association of School Boards, and those are listed in your backs. Is there anything additional to report for Erie County Association of School Boards? I just want to sort of give a thank you to Erie County Association of School Boards. They've been a tremendous resource to us as a board during this time when we have a superintendent on leave and an acting superintendent in place. We've been able to rely on Erie County Association of School Boards for tremendous amount of guidance, and I've had some great conversations with them. So thank you for all the assistance. Item F. Mrs. Vansys and Mrs. Catherine Goldner attended the NISBA Equity and Inclusivity Webinar, which happened on October 7th. Mrs. Vansys, would you like to report on this event?
Yes. So we have facilitator Darcy, who many of us already met, who was our facilitator during our own board retreat. But I had three of the most phenomenal people that delivered this webinar. Dr. Robinson, who was the superintendent of Shandawa. Dr. Brown, who's the superintendent of Shandawa. Dr. Brown, who's the superintendent of Ithaca, and Michael Jamie, who was the president of Elman School District. This was an outstanding, outstanding webinar on diversity and inclusivity. And seeing that diversity is a goal that the board has as well as the district, we're receiving a presentation later tonight on it. I'm very, very excited because there's a lot of hard work that our district needs to do. And these three individuals presented such a knowledge base and expertise on what we can do as a district. So a recommendation I will have is to ask that we reach out to one of these individuals to be a facilitator. Because the one thing that they emphasized is the collaborative effort that must go into this. And when I say collaborative effort, it means everyone. It means the Board of Education, parents, all the teachers, staff, administration, and the students. And we need to have an open mindset. We need to really self-reflect our own selves in what we have as a district to offer our students. Just talking about how it's not just about equitable courses, but opportunities. What decisions are being made, such as extracurriculars, courses, the funding and allocation that we're delivering? Fundamentally providing equitable opportunities for all. We can't separate equity from opportunities in regards to our outcomes. So I took just pages and pages, this is one out of three webinars. I do absolutely plan to go to the part two and the part three. They just had such a knowledge base of what we can do even as a board. That is exciting because we are a very diverse, as we all know, school district. And I think that it's time that we really embrace it and change maybe some of our past practices to make sure we are including everyone to have opportunities for all. Anything that you wanted to add?
I think that you covered it very nicely, Mrs. Van Sij. I too, I found it so beneficial. I do know that they sent out the reporting to all board members, and I would highly recommend that all of the board members watch the recording of the webinar. And I am too planning to attend the two upcoming webinars. They're going to be on institutional racism and building diverse workforce. So I am very much looking forward to attending those.
Thank you, Goldner, for giving your time for attending. And Mrs. Catherine Zach-Goldner, since you're so good at like almost acting as our secretary at times, will you make sure that that link is provided to the board? I don't recall seeing that.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe it came through to all of us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would love to hear if it was, and if we need to know the passwords to access that, because sometimes that's the case.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mrs. Van Sij, for your report. Mr. Lemay has submitted a report from the NISBA Advocacy Council meeting. Mr. Lemay, do you wish to add anything?
No, I think my report did a fairly good summary. I, you know, I got along my guideline. I guess I will say that I felt confident in Congressman Jacobs that he was going to be in Washington fighting for our needs for public education and funding and whatnot. So I was pleasantly surprised after the meeting that we had, so.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else to report under NISBA? Right, moving on to item G. Mrs. Catherine Zach-Goldner requested changes and additions to the work of the board agreement. Those changes are listed in board docs, if everyone would just take a moment to pull those up. And does anyone have any questions or comments regarding these considerations? For the change to the work of the board agreement? Mrs. Van Sij?
So for 9G, I guess just having a discussion or clarification. The option to acknowledge written communication, so does that mean any time the board receives a letter, it is no longer going to be our board president and we have the option to choose when to respond? Just to let you know, I did call around, as I usually do, to other school districts, to board members, to see what their policies and practices are. And we've had a lot of discussions. This is an unusual, unprecedented time as we know. So things are a little different, and there has been constant ongoing emails that we've received since basically March, I would have to say, on various topics, but all related distance learning and to your senior activities and reopening plan. So it has been quite cumbersome, I'm sure, for Mrs. Leatherbarrel. I realize the community might not like it, that one person responds, our board president. But I just wanted to have a discussion, because if we open it to the option you can, I just would like to know the parameters. Because are we all responding to people then? Is it your choice of who you respond to? I just want to make sure that we also don't set the precedent that if some people respond to some individuals, others aren't, that it then becomes, you know, we're pitting our own board against each other in a way. I think it's, we need to just have that discussion on what we're looking at in terms of parameters or how we want to continue to operate.
Mrs. Catherine Zach-Goldner?
Okay, so I, since this was my suggestion, my thought behind that was still, I believe, let's see, which one is this? Yeah, I know it's nine, but G?
G, the last one.
Right, so my thought process was that we would still distribute the written correspondence, which is C, distribute the written correspondence regarding district-related matters to all of their board members, the superintendent, executive assistant to the superintendent and district clerk. Then the board president, in coordination with the district clerk, will respond to the correspondence on behalf of the board. So I believe that the formal response would still be coming from our board president, as we have been doing that. But the reason I had, my thinking behind G was just for us to do a short acknowledgement. Maybe if we have a personal connection to someone that's writing to the board or something strikes a chord with us, just so we can acknowledge and say thank you for letting us know. This is our procedure, and then we can say that this is, you know, the procedure is for the board president to respond. Okay, that was my thought, okay, that makes sense.
And I appreciate you bringing up part C of that. Because I do think it's important for our community to understand that when I'm responding, I am responding as spokesperson for the board. And I'm doing so only in regards to approved board actions. So it's not an opportunity for me to give my opinion, nor am I trying to speak for eight other individuals, because that would not be fair. We often have very different thoughts on issues. We don't think the same on everything, nor should be. So oftentimes throughout this unique situation, there have been very specific questions related to reopening, why were there certain decisions made? Maybe there are questions about instruction or safety concerns or technology concerns. All of those above that I just mentioned, so we would need to go through our superintendent, in this case, our acting superintendent. And in that case, we ask our public to please start at the building level, which is usually the teacher. So you start with your teacher. If you're not satisfied or you need a higher level of response, you go to your building principal. And you continue up the chain of command. So if it was a specific department, you might reach out to that department specialist, or you might then reach out to Dr. Bealyn, Dr. McKenna, Mr. Matursky, Mr. Skanzuza. So that is the way it's supposed to go. Somewhere along the line, that message got lost, and a lot of very specific questions started becoming addressed to the Board of Education. So when I go to write a response, I take it very seriously. I take their responsibilities very seriously because I know I'm acting as a spokesperson for the entire board, who has trusted me to be the president and to be their spokesperson. Nobody wants someone to speak for them and then not like the message that's shared out. So with this, Mrs. Catherine Zach-Goldner, I do support the idea of having the option to acknowledge the written communication. So that's where, and thank you, Mrs. Van Sij, for bringing that up. It's not necessarily addressing their issue or their question. So they may not still be happy, but they can at least know that their message was received. And if some of you do anyways, some of you will say, thank you for your message. Our practice is that the board president will issue a response. So I am comfortable with that. Is there any other board members that want to weigh in on that? Or not voting on this this month? Because we do typically run, when we have, you know, changes, we go through two cycles of board meetings that we were thoroughly vetting it. Is there any other questions or comments on that? Mr. McCallum?
Yeah, thanks, I agree with the recommendations as well. I think Doctor McCarry started giving this a while back when things were addressed specifically to her, and I sort of took up that practice as well, as I thought it was good to acknowledge things that were personally addressed to us as individuals. And I like having the option to acknowledge and explain the process that you receive or request from the board president as she has been elected to represent us as a board. So I think these are good recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum. And I think too, as I'm looking through this, D says to fulfill the role of board liaison by reporting on board actions and sharing district information. This previously, has been previously announced or made public at the board meetings. So, you know, there was a comment earlier in the night that the board isn't speaking with parents. And that's just simply not true nor fair. Because we each have liaison assignments to our PTSA schools, and several of us have two assignments. And I know I've gone to all of my scheduled meetings so far, as I believe have all of you, because I've read your thorough reports that you've submitted. So in each of those building PTSA meetings, board members give a report, and they also take questions and answer questions. And in doing so, going forward, we're going to make sure that we follow this language here, that when we act as a liaison, we are reporting on board action. Now that is a time where if you're asked, you know, what are your thoughts on XYZ? As long as you are saying, my personal opinion is, and you're clarifying that, then that would be appropriate. And I know that all of us do that, and it's been happening now with our PTSA council meetings as well. And it's really important to acknowledge that that's the proper venue. Because our PTSA leaders are the elected parent leaders of our school community. And that's an important difference than just responding to a Facebook group. And I think that that's really important, that we give these individuals, our PTSA leaders, that recognition because they put in tireless hours volunteering as to be. So thank you, Mrs. Catherine Zach-Goldner, for bringing these suggestions or changes. I support them, and I look forward to voting this through next month. Great, we are now moving on to our student attendance report. Doctor McCallum, would you please give your community update?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Leatherbarrel. I've got some good information that I'm happy to report on today. One is, I'd like to talk about the relaunch plan. Today was an important day regarding our relaunch plan, because today was step one in phase one. Fifth and sixth graders began the phase-in process today. And we're very excited to welcome all our fifth and sixth grade students back, and first day went pretty good. And we're excited to start, you know, next week, phase two, and the week after that, phase three. So we're very happy to be relaunching the plan at this time. And I know one of the questions that Greg had earlier too. Greg, our plan is to have grades nine through 12 back on October 26th. So we're right on schedule with that plan. And I want to thank everybody for all their help and support, and teachers, our students, our parents, and all the administrators that really put the plan together and now let the plans in motion. Took a lot of work to get this plan up and running. So I thank everybody for all their efforts, and I look forward to working with everyone over these next three weeks as we phase in each step of this plan. Related to, also, I'd like to call everyone's attention to the relaunch page that's on our website. I know that Mr. Filipowski worked very hard to put together an informational page on our website regarding the relaunch page. And I encourage you to go and see that page, because it has extensive information regarding the plan, the committee information, you know, the various committees that are working on the relaunch plan. It also has information from the principals that are very critical about the back-to-school reentry plan that they put together in their buildings. And it has screencasts that the principals put together that give additional information about the plan. So I encourage everyone to look at the relaunch page on our website. It will give you some very good information regarding the relaunch plan. Another way to get excellent information is our new weekly newsletter. Last week, I'm sure many of you realized and saw this, that each building started a new weekly newsletter, and they all have common, consistent templates and formats. This is another way to increase communication throughout our district. We wanted each building, K through 12, to have a consistent format. This is one of the things we had heard about, making sure we share consistent information and get it out on a weekly basis. So this is a vehicle now that we just launched last week. It is getting, there's information in there, also about the relaunch plan, but many other things that are happening in your building. So I encourage you to make sure that you look each week for the new weekly newsletter. And again, I thank all of our principals and everyone, and I know they put committees together in their buildings to put information together on that. And I thank all of them for all their work to do that, and I appreciate it. Mr. Filipowski as well, who helped to put that template together. So thank you for helping to increase communication and make a consistent communication across our district. Another thing I wanted to update everybody on was our COVID-19 updates. As you know, we've had three confirmed cases in our district thus far. And each time, we've been working very closely with Erie County Department of Health with each case. And each case that we get, so we will publish a letter with all the information that's on there. So we've been really working closely with Erie County Department of Health. And every time we get a confirmed case, we will let you know as soon as we possibly can. And again, thanks for all the cooperation from everybody in our buildings and from Erie County Department of Health. They've been very helpful working with us with these sort of cases. Another initiative I'd like to bring up is we started live streaming sporting events. And so far, we've done boy soccer, girl soccer, girl swim. And tonight, we're streaming girls swimming in North tonight. I want to say again, another great way, people wanted to be able to see sporting events, and this is a way that we've been able to help to bring people to these sporting events. Because you know with the new COVID regulations, we can only have two spectators for each student at each event. So live streaming these events are really helping people to see the events. And we've got a lot of positive feedback already on this initiative. And thanks again for all the people who worked to put this together. It's really very helpful. People, it gives not only, there's a lot more than two people in each family that want to watch these games and these contests. So thanks to everybody for putting that together. And the last thing I want to say about the community update is again, so congratulations to Tom Nab and to Christian Brand. Great job, we're very proud of your accomplishments.
Thank you, Doctor McKenna. And next, will you provide an update on the strategic planning process?
Yes, we're pleased to announce that the strategic planning process will begin again. Our next meeting is November 24th. The location right now is to be determined because of the COVID regulations. We're trying to find ways with which we can properly social distance, or perhaps we might have to do some Zooming with that particular meeting. We're working right now with Dr. Kaiser and the committee to find a way to make sure that we can safely hold those meetings. But it's time to bring that committee back. We've got a lot of important work to do. And I know myself and the leadership team are looking very forward to starting the strategic planning process again, and working with the team to bring that to fruition.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members?
Oh, yeah. I think it would be beneficial to the community. My question would be, why did we phase the gray boxes? Was it possible to send them all in at once? If you have any answer on that?
Well, sure, no, happy to answer that. Well, remember the committee, where we talked about one of the best ways to phase this and to make it more effective and efficient as possible. The phase-in model was definitely the most advantageous to do that for many reasons. One, professional development. We had to make sure that we had properly training for all of our teachers. There are approximately 700 teachers that needed to get trained. So that time allowed us to make sure that we got adequate training and support to our teachers. Also, another important aspect was the preparation of technology. We prepared approximately, oh, it's the top of my head, 24 We prepared approximately, oh, it's the top of my head, 2,400 laptops and 2,300 Chromebooks. We also have, uh, uh, hotspots, uh, available now for, for people. We've, uh, purchased document cameras. We've purchased, uh, ball cameras for the, um, for the, for the devices. We've done a lot of technology work as well with, you know, both uses of testing of the system. Each week we've been doing testing to make sure that adequately we can hold, um, that much technology, there's a lot of bandwidth that goes into the, uh, big district like this. So it helped us to put together a professional development plan, this technology plan, uh, that made sure that when we phased this in, it maximized the success and the effectiveness efficiency of the program. Thank you.
Mrs. Bieber. Yes, I just want to follow up on some of your comments, Dr. McCallum, around communication and the efforts that the district has put into communicating families over the last month. Communication is something we've heard about from stakeholders for a long time. Um, that's been a hot topic in community forums for years. Um, looking for more communication from the district, looking for more communication from buildings. And so those couple of items that you mentioned, the daily update to really hear every day what's happening from district office. Relaunch plan, which gives parents a place to go and see what's happening, happening specifically at every building. And that weekly newsletter from buildings, I think, really is such a great shift to help our families access the information that they need. A lot of times, I know as a parent, I have a child at elementary level, middle school and high school. And to manage all the dates and the things and the, what did he say? To have a place that you can anchor and go to with accurate information is really helpful. Um, and in addition to those pieces that you mentioned, on that relaunch page, um, they have the presentations that principals put together. And I know that was advertised and hopefully people watching the board meeting take advantage of. I was so impressed sitting through those meetings, um, for my older children in middle and high school. They answered so many questions that parents have. I mean, little specific things to questions that every parent would have. Um, and so, Mrs. Leiter-Bearle, before you made the point about some of the questions that we get as board members about specific items, it's the building leaders and then people working in the buildings that really have the answers to those questions. And we've got places now, um, with those, the multiple places, uh, the website, those, those meetings, uh, to take advantage of that. So I just want to recognize outstanding work that I'm seeing from buildings, those principals and the amount of work that went into those slides. All the information there, those meetings that took place three nights in a row to accommodate schedules so that, um, you could hear. And lastly, the other piece I just wanted to mention in being a parent is the communication that I'm seeing from teachers has been outstanding, outstanding. And maybe I won the lottery with the teachers that my kids have, but I don't think so. I know that our teachers are working hard, but what I see as a parent to help me navigate what my first grader needs to do, what my sixth grader is doing and what my 11th grader knows that doesn't tell me. Uh, because he, and it's actually they're learning a whole different set of skills, how to be independent and take the, um, information and the directions they get from their teachers and navigate this process that nobody wants to be a part of. We all want, you know, life to be February 2020, but here we are. And I am really grateful for the amount of communication effort that I have seen on part with all of these district employees over the last month because I think it really is making a difference in getting us to a place where we feel more comfortable, uh, with what is happening. And I've been hearing a lot of feedback from other, uh, parents who feel the same way. So.
Well, we've heard from the community and that's why we put these pieces in place. Uh, we, we've heard that people wanted more communication. So we got together as a team. And you're right, everybody was great. I mean, the, the teachers, the principals, everybody got right on board. And, uh, they're really doing everything in their power and everybody's going above the call of duty to make sure that we get all this information, information out. Cause you want to make sure that people get the information, um, because that's important.
It's very appreciated. If anything, you know, the comments that start to hear now are, um, the amount of what's now can be overwhelming. And I think that's a positive shift or if anything, to have a lot of information to make sure you're getting all those things. I prefer that over wondering or forgetting misinformation and asking for answers. Thank you to all those involved in the district to help really communicate with families and students to help us navigate this. And board members as well, we've gotten the information too. So it's appreciable.
And we continue to review all of, uh, every week too, uh, and on a daily basis with the leadership team. We, we're reviewing all, we review the webpage every day. Um, we review the newsletters with the principals, the screencast. Um, everybody's really working together for a, I'd say we've become a communication, you know, team to get everything out. And, uh, everybody's been really cooperative and I'd say it's a true, a true team effort.
That's very good to hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. At this time, Dr. McCallum, would you please provide a presentation on diversity to the board?
Yeah, uh, at this time, what we're going to do, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Skanzuzo and Dr. Baylen, who have worked on a diversity presentation. Um, the diversity presentation is an overview of diversity efforts within the district with a focus on cultural diversity, history, initiatives, and activities promoting and supporting inclusiveness in our school community. And, uh, Dr. Baylen and Mr. Skanzuzo, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. McCallum. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to talk about even overview of diversity as it exists in the Williamsville Central School District. So to anchor our presentation this evening, uh, we reference this articulation of culture from the New York State Education Department, reflected in their documents on this topic. The reason for this is to remind ourselves of the inclusive nature and celebration of all people and every individual, every individual in our school community and society as a whole. Our district is, is a diverse community of learners in many ways. While we do not formally document religions and cultures, we know our school community is one of the most diverse in Western New York. Christianity, Judaism, Buddhism, Muslim, Hinduism are among the largest practiced religions in our school community. And as required by the New York State Education Department, we document preferred language of communication to families of, to families of over 500 students identified as English language learners. Presently, 41 languages are spoken by our English language learners and their families. Our district has a history that goes way back many years regarding the community dialogue of diversity. Following a school matter in the mid 1980s, the district superintendent Howard Walker convened a committee of stakeholders to research, review and explore diversity within the Williamsville community and to avoid any future occurrences of injustices, biases and harm to others based on their convictions. This resulted in a task force of cultural diversity to explore what, what was occurring in the district and to make recommendations. Dr. Walker's goal was to create a policy. He convened a group of 22 who intended to present this to school board on May of 1992. The policy was, was subject to review and a great deal of community feedback regarding revisions, even the following year. He passed in 1993, the same month the policy was passed. Uh, some of the topics that were discussed, school activity related to religion holiday are themes. Uh, this acknowledged, uh, this provided an acknowledgement, explanation and teaching about a variety of celebrated holidays, which are culturally diverse, which are encouraged in our required curriculum. Does it meet the four filters? Is it constitutionally permissible? Is it educationally sound? Is it culturally sensitive? And is it age appropriate? When it comes to symbols, a duration of time for displaying those symbols, uh, was 10 days. When it came to speakers, assurances that speakers understand the First Amendment guidelines for teaching about religion in public education. And with that, the Williamsville Central School District Cultural Diversity and Resource booklet was established. Our district calendar, a religious and cultural celebrations calendar is developed each year for building administrators, teachers and staff to utilize. This document highlights both religious observances and cultural celebrations which may impact school activities. The purpose of this document is to assist all faculty and staff in planning as well as increase awareness and understanding of the various faith and cultural communities represented in the Williamsville Central School District community. This is also distributed to local community members who serve as contacts for the variety of religions and cultures represented in our district. These contacts are asked to identify cultural and religious holidays on which students of a particular culture and religion are usually absent from school. Building events around, um, various religions and cultural observances, you know, such as Ramadan be an example, where students are being, are fasting during the daylight hours. And it may interfere with, you know, field days that happen at the elementary school. So be aware of those kinds of things that take place. Absences for religious observances and legal, are legal absences. Teachers understanding that those days of religious observances are conducted as normal instructional days, including the introduction of new material, testing and other normal instructional activities. Makeup tests and other considerations are given to students who may not be able to complete homework assignments because of absences or inadequate time during religious observances. When it talks about music, uh, an array of music is included in the music program and our performance. As highlighted in our policy, 8360, our Religious Expression Instructional Program and the Williamsville Central School District Regulations of 8360R. The purpose of using religious music should be used to teach musical concepts, to convey historical and, and cultural content, or to create aesthetic experiences in a setting which emphasizes artistic expression, educational value and is not celebration of faith. We talk about, um, the purpose of our cultural diversity and religious policy in the Williamsville Central School District. The goal is to foster and develop acknowledgement, like knowledge and development and respect for the rights of all cultures and religious faiths. Opportunities to learn about culture and religion, religious traditions are, are provided within the framework of curriculum. Information about religion and cultural holidays or traditions focused on how and when they're celebrated. Their origins and histories are part of the instruction. Teaching is handled with great care, sensitivity and respect for the feelings and beliefs of individuals. An environment where students of various ethnic backgrounds feel comfortable in sharing about their religious and cultural traditions is a goal of the district as a means of promoting tolerance. We study about religion in the context of curriculum as a means of exposing students to a variety of religious views, intended to increase students' awareness to create informed citizens. At this time, I'll, I'll pass it over to Dr. Baylen. She'll talk about some of our resources.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to be with everyone this, uh, evening and to speak on this very important topic. So on the screen you see, uh, quite an extensive number of resources. These have been developed for staff, but I did want to make note that for the community, in addition to our Board of Education policy and the company regulation 8360, information on cultural diversity is found on our district website under the resources tab and also just a selection of cultural diversity. So there's a very distinct and direct link to that. This outlines not only the policy on cultural diversity and religion, but it also addresses teachers and the teaching of religion in the classroom, displays, holidays, prayer, musical performances and expressions of faith in public schools. So just to highlight some of the documents that are listed on this slide, uh, so that, uh, there's familiarity with what these are. Um, and again, these have been developed and cultivated, um, over a number of years. Um, and as fact, the first one, the K through four infusion of multiculturalism is going to be updated this year as part of our curriculum updating process. This is a curriculum that's specifically designed for grades K through four. And this reflects patriotic, cultural, religious holidays and outlines the basic teachings taught for each. Additional information is provided, uh, provided, excuse me, on each holiday as a resource to teachers to facilitate, facilitate teaching as it occurs within the school calendar. The fourth grade curriculum is the first chronological study of New York state history and teachers reinforce the understanding of these particular items as they were naturally in the social studies curriculum. Study of world religions is further revisited in middle school and in high school, for example, in grade six and in the mobile studies, um, course. We also have a number of courses, I would just add, and I can, um, mention those in a little bit, uh, later part of the presentation. In terms of the cultural diversity booklet, this provides information on a number of religious groups, religions, and also reflects a question and answer document that is used to reflect on outside presenters as well as our policies. As far as the outside presenters, this includes information on how teachers identify presenters, legal parameters and considerations, addressing differing views and perspectives, artifacts and student participation and activities. As far as our district brochure, this reflects the same information that is on our district website with regard to cultural diversity. Uh, Mr. Skanzuzo has already mentioned our, uh, calendars. Uh, I wanted to take a moment to talk a little bit about professional development. And there has been extensive professional development, uh, for quite a period of years. Uh, just to give you a sense of the last three years, uh, and we could actually go back as you can see, our history goes back decades. Uh, we had, uh, you may recall the name Emily Chiarello here, uh, about three or four years ago. That's when we began our journey with Emily. At that time, she introduced our, all of our staff members to the Teaching Tolerance Anti-Bias Framework, which is very heavily reflecting, uh, standards, um, and social justice, um, issues. Um, Emily did training for K through 12, so is mental health, health staff and our support staff. So she, um, was widely, uh, seen among many audiences in our district. Um, in addition to that, because we've talked a lot about religion and you've certainly heard that part, we've also had professional development on LBGTQ. This includes selecting books. Um, it also includes, um, uh, a course, for example, TRAS 101. Uh, there were actually quite a few classes, uh, that we offered in our after-school program as well. We also had a number of teachers and staff convened and implementation teams. Those again, as you recall, are voluntary opportunities for staff members to come together to study topics of importance to them. They do research and then they implement practices in the classroom and, uh, they expand the gamut in these topical areas. Uh, we did also have visits from Dr. Kazee and he spoke on the Muslims community that was in our more recent years. We've also had our partner, um, from our, uh, local community, uh, discussing, um, her Hebrew. It's been a huge plus for our school district. Um, and we're very lucky because as Mr. Skanzuzo mentioned, we have many community resources that we draw on. Um, so while I mentioned a lot of classes, not only are they from internal stakeholders, they're from members of our school community who help us have a better understanding of, of, uh, different groups and, uh, different topics. Um, so we are, are happy also to share with you, um, that we've had, uh, several, and you'll see pictures in, in a little bit, um, to share this with you. Um, work that our students and staff have done on Challenge to Change. Tony can talk about that in a few minutes. Um, and last but not least, I, I do want to recognize the work of Tim Redman over at East. Um, he has done a lot of work, uh, with human rights and genocide studies. Um, he's very actively involved in our community. So both internally regarding Williamsville and in our local community, there has been a lot of work done on, in that particular area. We, we have hosted, um, visitors to the school district to speak on a number of these topics. The other item we wanted to share with you is a document from New York State that reflects some of the information on the screen. Um, in this particular case, the Culturally Responsive and Sustaining Education Framework, or the CRS, is something that articulates a vision for an educational system. So we're going to just highlight a bit of this document for you today. Um, if, uh, folks are not aware, this document was finalized and released to the field just prior to school closure. There was a New York State level committee that worked in the spring of 2018. They actually started in January and set, had several meetings and actually the first several pages of the document outline, uh, the various contributors to the effort. It wasn't until the following year that the document was finalized. However, one of the names that you might recognize is Dr. Andrea Honingsfeld. We've actually had Dr. Honingsfeld here, um, in the We'd actually had Dr. Honingsfeld here in the district doing training on English language learning. We are actually considering bringing her here. That was part of our plan before this school closure occurred. So we would like to resume discussions with Dr. Honingsfeld because she's one of the contributing members to this document. But what this framework does is it helps educators create a student-centered learning environment that is set to accomplish several things. This affirms racial, linguistic, and cultural identities, prepares students for rigor and independent learning, developing students' ability to connect across lines of difference, it elevates historically marginalized voices, and empowers students as agents of change. So what we're hoping again is that the multiple expressions of diversity are used as assets within our district. That term is actually used in the document, and I think there's no better way to explain what we mean by diversity. It's a very inclusive term. While we're highlighting specific components of it, it's really designed to be a very conclusive component. And really, the overall goal is to sustain mindsets and guidelines across stakeholder groups. That's what we foresee as some of our next steps. That's where we need to go. So I know we talked a little bit about some of the efforts at the schools and maybe want to highlight those, but I know one of the questions that we were asked was about training related to this document. Certainly, training is part of our next step and our next plan, but so too are convening stakeholders. We need to have much more inclusive, robust, comprehensive discussion on the multitude of aspects when it relates to diversity. Obviously, we are just scratching the surface of what this could actually be. While great strides have been made, much work is still needed to be done. So in terms of the areas that were highlighted there, creating and welcoming and affirming environment is certainly one that we have focused upon in our district. This has included items such as restorative practices, community circles, opportunities for parents to have communication in their language appropriate, and certainly professional development and workshops for teachers and staff to learn and understand the cultures of their students. One question was asked from a board member regarding DASSA and disproportionality. So I just didn't want to give Tony a moment to kind of jump in here and add that piece, and then I'll continue in a moment.
So annually, we have DASSA coordinators, too, that are assigned in each building. Their role is really to assess any complaints within a 24-hour period that come their way. It's usually an administrator and a guidance counselor typically is the pattern that we're following in our buildings for students. They, and you know, so they're getting trained, you know, and our faculty is as well through GCN training regarding DASSA, information about related concepts. Our code of conduct with students is also reviewed, and material incidences which take place involving our district, really when you start to investigate DASSA-related incidents are very low. There may be a few that pop up, but when you really start digging in and peeling the layer of the onion, to really investigate each of those circumstances individually, like I said, the material incidences really are very low. With regards to disproportionality, you know, the action plan for the state that we were in, when we were in a violation a few years back, and it talked about the parameters with regards to discipline that we were disproportionate on. And I like to say that that's something that I actually oversee in my tenure as Assistant Superintendent. We've been in compliance, and it's because of the measures that I think we've taken. Preventative programs such as restorative practices, community circles, which help address and minimize those circumstances taking place. As far as our code of conduct, it's reviewed every March by our district wellness committee. They get a chance to look it over. We come back, we convene in April, and we talk about any of the changes or any of the additional deletions, things that maybe are outdated, things that need to be added and updated to the code of conduct. Those are also vetted by our legal team and then they're posted to the Board of Education for adoption.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scanzuzzo. So with regard to fostering high expectations and rigorous instruction, certainly holding high expectations for all students must be a continued focus of all of our district staff members. Current events are addressed particularly within social studies classes with a Board of Education policy that provides wonderful guidance on how to navigate controversial topics or issues in the classroom. Certainly, the inclusion of parents in cultural events in the schools to further acceptance and understanding continues to be a tremendous endeavor at the school level. Regarding inclusive curriculum and assessment, just a few examples for you, an ELA and reading and writing workshop, as well as with our library collections, the curation of reading collections is critical. I did want to share with you, if you've not read this article, I honestly think it's one of the most powerful pieces that we can look at, especially in light of the topic that we're talking about, and it is from Reading is Fundamental, and it's called Mirrors, Windows, and Sliding Glass Doors. I just want to read a few lines from it. So what the notion is here is that books are sometimes windows, offering views of worlds that may be real or imagined, familiar or strange. These windows are also sliding glass doors, and readers only have to walk through an imagination to be part of whatever world has been created or recreated by the author. When lighting conditions are just right, however, a window can also be a mirror. Literature transforms human experience and reflects it back to us, and in that reflection, we can see our own lives and experiences as part of the larger human experience. Reading then becomes a means of self-affirmation, and readers often see their mirrors in books. And that's really honestly the goal of our entire instructional program. So if we take that and really apply it to everything we're doing, it's probably one of the most powerful ideas we can move forward on behalf of students. So I'm happy to say you're a work in literacy that is a huge driving force. If you have not had the opportunity, there's actually an individual who helps curate all of their materials. This is what they operate under, and it's really a powerful piece. So I did want to share that. So thank you for indulging me in a few minutes. As far as this area is concerned, it also includes students actively participating in social emotional learning, community service requirements for students while they're enrolled in their government class, which empowers them to be a positive change within their community, and our curriculum council process. Again, as you recall, and you're involved in the approval process in that regard, when you receive our recommendations as our stakeholders come forth, that's where a lot of our courses have come from. So our current events classes and some of our electives that we brought, those were ideas that somebody had that actually were brought to the council and became experiences for our students. So they're very powerful. And through the professional learning, teachers examine their personal biases and also look at how we can turn any opportunity that we have, and I think Tom Napp said it best, to benefit our students. That really is what it's all about. In terms of policy review, we conduct annual processes for the review of policies. I know that was a question that one of our board members had. So on our next screen, again, just some examples for you of ways our schools have continued to celebrate and embrace diversity. Again, these are just some examples, and on the following slide you will also see some pictures that exemplify some of the items that were here. In this case, Challenge to Change Summit was hosted by the Williamsville Central School District at Damon College in 2018. In this case, Country Parkway's Initiative to Create a Welcome Sign that Represented All of the Native Languages That Students Spoke Other Than English. Our Black History Month Celebration, which is supported, highlighted not just in February but in our classrooms across the district. And now you'll see a few examples from transit middle school. In this case, this map is of the intercontinental US and the world to plot where students are from. This was excellent. I actually got to see this in person. It was really quite striking. And in this case, transit made a collage of flags from around the world illustrating where the students' ancestry originated. And last but not least, the celebration of the many different languages that students spoke in that particular building. So as we had mentioned, our next steps include looking to convene a group of stakeholders to research, review, and discuss diversity from a multitude of perspectives as it relates to our organization. We certainly talked a lot about the instructional program and some of our other related elements, but our goal in this case would be a comprehensive, inclusive approach to advance and enhance our efforts as a school district. Additional details and information will be shared as this is further developed and next steps are taken. So at this time, our presentation has concluded, and we are very happy to answer any questions of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Valen and Mr. Scanzuzzo, for your detailed presentation. It's really amazing to see how much work is happening and how long it's been going on. I also very much appreciate the observation that there's still more to be done. And even with this lengthy presentation, to be able to say that we're scratching the surface, I feel is honest and true and very needed in this time, knowing that we are teaching tolerance and anti-bias, and we're working on ways to do it more effectively. This is excellent. Now, when you talk about next steps and bringing in community stakeholders, can you speak a little bit about what that might look like? Are we talking about maybe forming a committee? Or what is sort of envisioned there, like getting more community stakeholders to have a say in being able to share their experiences regarding racism and bias that they may have experienced, especially our students?
And I'll ask my colleagues, as always, Dr. McKenna and Mr. Scanzuzzo, please join in any comments that they may have. But one of the things that we had talked about upon reflecting on this particular component and putting it into practice is we have seen the great power in bringing people together. This is certainly no exception. It will be critical that stakeholders internally and within our school community as a whole, along with organizational partners, we talked about even UB or some of our colleges, drawing upon any resources that we have. People are our greatest resource. So in terms of bringing people together, absolutely, this must be an effort that's undertaken collaboratively with committees, with groups of people. We also have existing structures that we believe can also be utilized so that it is not just one group of people having the discussion. As we mentioned in the document, and really what that document says to us is that this is an ongoing component that has a broad reach. So to have one singular group, we don't believe might be enough. It's certainly a starting point, but really the goal is to permeate all aspects of our organization. So certainly, instruction's a big piece of it, but there are a lot of other components to what our organization is made up of. And what we love about this approach is, and again, the document's a guiding piece, it's not the sole piece, but it speaks to many different types of stakeholders being involved in the process. That is not just members of our internal community. So it's going to be essential that we have a structure in place whereby we are able to channel all of the experiences, talents, and anything that anyone can bring to the table that will help our work and our efforts move forward. So Dr. McKenna and Mr. Scanzuzzo, is there anything else you would like to add that I didn't ever mention?
Well, the other thing I'd like to add is that you're right that we want this to permeate all aspects of our school district. So maybe start with a central committee and then become building-level committees and so it does, it makes its way throughout our district. But we've also talked about the idea of looking and analyzing many of our practices in diversity as well, where we're even going to explore, like even hiring practices and things to see what can be done. I know there's some questions that have come up to us, so we're willing to, as I said, we take discussions already to see what can we do, how can we explore, and that's going to be part of this process as well, our hiring practices and say all aspects, we might look at all aspects of our organization through this process, because it's important.
We also want to highlight, you know, some of the societal pieces that we're dealing with in our culture. Just look around, turn on the TV, read the newspaper, and talk about a relationship between, you know, what's taking place with, and I had conversations with our school resource officers, and to have a conversation with them about allowing students to just have a dialogue about what their relationship is like being an integral part of the community and some of the depiction that's happened around the country regarding police officers and what that's about, to have an open dialogue and just open up some conversations. You know, that, you know, a lot of these societal issues do come into schools, and I think providing students an opportunity to have conversation, you know, just transparent conversation. I've already had conversations with our school resource officers, and they're willing to participate, and we would love to participate in an opportunity to have a conversation about some of the things that are taking place.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Barnes?
Thank you. I have a comment basically. Thank you to everyone involved in this initiative. This is excellent work, and it makes me proud to be a part of this district, how much attention we're paying to engage in this important issue. It also reminds me again that the perception of our district does not line up with the reality. There are 41 different languages spoken in our school district. It seems like there are a lot of initiatives that we've been thinking about. I would just encourage members of every constituent group to seek out leadership positions in our district. Join your PTSA, become a leader at that level. Consider running for the school board. I don't want to put myself out of a high-sticking job, but we would benefit from experiences outside of our own. So I would just encourage members of every constituent group to seek out these leadership positions in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said.
So I also, of course, appreciate your efforts, your time, and the initiatives with this, and it's amazing to see the work that the district is doing. And I'm equally pleased to hear that there's still more work and the recognition that there's more work to be done. I would like to reiterate one of the three individuals that spoke to us during the webinar because they come from districts where they personally worked for their change in their district in regards to diversity, so they can speak to what they did, the process, and the outcomes. As we know, COVID, I truly believe grossly brought to the forefront the inequities of our students in education, and we're not just talking technology and lack of Wi-Fi, things like that. It goes much deeper than that. So it is up to us as leaders and as teachers to engineer, be the ones that engineer, and be responsive to our global community and culturally responsive needs. So I would just like to see the work continue around looking at our policies. As we saw, they were adopted in 1993. It might be time to look and really reassess them and examine and maybe make changes to them. Continue to build curriculum that's inquiry-based, still based around our standards, but really culturally responsive. We are going to hear about correspondence from a student that we received about African-American studies. So that can be a discussion and something we look into. We've done things like brought in Mandarin Chinese, which is excellent. So continuing with that work, I think is excellent. And then I know that we sometimes say voluntary PD. I would love, and I know not everyone's happy with this, but as an educator, I think it's totally appropriate to say that we have mandatory PD about what a culturally responsive classroom needs to look like and should look like, because we need to make sure that we're all part of this in order for there to truly be meeting all of our social, emotional, and culturally responsive needs of all of our students. So just that collaborative effort needs to continue to work. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
I enjoyed listening.
We will definitely make sure that what you spoke to is actually reflective of our plans as well. I mentioned the professional development, the work with Emily was required, so everyone did get that. We did give a lot of opportunities, though, for some voluntary or selective PD for our staff, but it is time, again, as we said, to revisit, reflect, and see where our next steps take us. I did mention the classes, so you brought up the African-American studies. Some of the courses that we had actually start with those very discussions. So items such as our current events class, our Human Rights and Genocide Studies, our History of Women is a significant one, Critical Thinking in the Age of Misinformation, which is actually one of our newer classes. The document speaks to having students look at things through a critical lens. That's a very tremendous piece in this whole conversation. And last but not least, another example is world religion. So So we're very encouraged, um, that's where some of the best ideas come from, is again, getting people together and getting those suggestions put into practice. So thank you for your comments as well.
And I'd also like to say that if they're not courses that we offer, a lot of these become clubs, extracurricular activities that are supported by an interest of students for the staff or a staff person oversees it as an advisor, Italian Club and, you know, all these other social justice clubs. So, uh, these things that originate in many shapes and sizes and forms, just we see throughout this.
So thank you very much for the presentation and for answering so many of the questions. Many of those were my questions that I submitted in advance, so I appreciate that. The one thing that I did want to know in terms of the next steps, how are you going to be identifying the members of the committee? Do you have any sense of that and the timeline that that might happen? I don't think I can speak to that directly. I want Dr. McKenna to please assist in responding. We, our discussion did not get to that level as of yet. So, Dr. McKenna, do you want to talk anything about that particular aspect?
Sure. We just are at the, at the first steps of this committee right now, but we'll report on that when we have that. That'll be the next steps that we do. We'll get a timeline and we'll get membership and we'll have that to you soon. Again, we, this is, we're just on step one of launching this committee. So, um, we're going to be having dialogue as a leadership team and then we'll bring it back to you.
And then just one other comment. I did notice some overlap with some of the work that's being done in strategic planning. So maybe tapping into that as well might be a good idea?
You're very common with part of our discussions as of recently as the San Francisco. I think there's quite a bit of overlap with the work of the strategic plan and some of the subcommittees. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'll use this opportunity to just let people know who are watching that, you know, if you're interested in being a member on the task force for cultural diversity, please reach out to one of us. Be happy to have you part of that organization.
Yeah, for example, a little before we're good, get done, there's a timeline. Maybe there should be a call out, put out on our Facebook, Twitter.
That'd be wonderful.
So more people can see that invitation.
Thank you. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our policy update. This is for second reading and adoption. Would someone like to motion to take from the table the following revised policies, sixty-five fifty Leaves of Absence and eighty-two forty-one Patriotism, Citizenship and Human Rights Education as presented? Mrs. Viger, thank you, and Mr. Mepka, second. All in favor to take it from the table? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion for the second reading and adoption of the revised policies sixty-five fifty and eighty-two forty-one? Mr. Warrenstein and Mrs. Transzai, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carried unanimously. I'm going to combine our, our finance items together. May I have a motion to approve the following agenda items? Twelve A, the twenty-twenty-one Budget Development Calendar. Twelve B, Budget and Transfers. Twelve C, Annual External Audits as presented. Mr. Mepka, thank you, Mr. Warrenstein, second. Is there any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carried unanimously for all finance items. Do you have any liaison reports? Please send them to Mrs. Carey. The listed meeting dates are in Word Doc. I'm going to thank all the board members for submitting all of their liaison reports at this point. Liaison reports are when we visit a school, PTSA meeting or other liaison assignment, whether it's through Erie County Association of School Boards, NISBA or other, the board then does a report and submits it for the record in Word Doc. This is an example of how we as board members are continually communicating with our stakeholders. Item fourteen is our correspondence to legislators. There was a request or an all call without, by the Erie County Association of School Boards, I believe, or NISBA as well, to have school boards submit a letter to our legislators to advocate for education stimulus. There is a draft letter in Word Docs right now. I want to thank, um, Mr. Biscaglia, Mrs. Transzai, and I believe Dr. Carey, Mr. Mepka, all to be assisted with this letter. So thank you for that. Does anyone have any objections to this letter going out? We don't have to take a vote per side, but we, we absolutely can if you choose if someone wants to motion that we, that we send this letter out. We can, otherwise I can just send that as foreperson and as spokesperson. I don't want in the future, when we get more calls to action, us to be delayed because we don't have a board meeting like right that week, right? Because I know even from the time this letter was drafted to today, there may have been some changes. Is there any discussion points for this letter? Mr. Mepka?
I like the letter and thank you very much. Mr. Biscaglia, I think did a lot of the writing of that letter, I'm not going to say, along with other people in it, but, um, the only thing I somewhat object to is the first sentence, "We are writing this letter to express our heightened concerns regarding the president's directives to cease the stimulus package until after the election." That was true at one point in time, but that's no longer true. I would, I would just urge us to take that sentence out and start it with the next sentence, which is, "As constituents and school board members of New York State, we are due to..." blah, blah, blah.
And is there any objections?
No. At the time when, when we wrote this, when Mike and I did it, that was a cir-, you know, the circumstance, we did it a couple of days ago, I think it was. Since that time, it's changed. So, Mrs. Carey, um, once we finalize the letter, we send it to Mrs. Carey. She put it on letterhead. We're sending it out to eight different congressmen, Higgins, US senators, New York state senators and our local governance. So, Mrs. Carey, if I send you just exactly what we want, could you change the letter then before we send it out? Because I know you were going to do that probably tomorrow morning. Thank you so much.
Because I know that the board wished to make an official motion, or we... Great. Any other legislative matters to discuss? Thank you. We do know that education stimulus is a high priority, so we are hoping that our legislators will remember. Okay, elementary scheduled comparison. I'm going to have to back over to Dr. McKenna.
Well, for this, I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Baylen. And I know she's got some help this evening from Mr. Bowlin and Dr. Bowlin, who are here to some of our elementary principals to help Dr. Baylen to explain a little bit about our elementary school day and some of the differences between remote and hybrid learners.
Thank you, Dr. McKenna. Thank you again to the board this evening. Uh, thank you to Mr. Bowlin and Dr. Bowlin for being here as well. Uh, and we wanted to highlight some information that was posted along with this item was the document called Elementary School Hybrid Model and Remote Online Learning Model. This document has actually been placed and has been on our website for quite some time. It's located under Instructional Information, Williamville CSD Relaunch Plan. So, again, uh, goal is to have the navigation by level so that for parents, uh, very clearly you can go right to the link. I have used this document quite extensively. Anytime I have received an inquiry or a call, this is very helpful information as a reference. So I just wanted to highlight some items contained within the document. And I would ask again, Mr. Bowlin or Dr. Bowlin to offer any additional words to supplement what I'm about to share. And of course, we are happy to answer after that any questions that you may have. So as a review, um, our program at the elementary schools has remained unchanged. We posted this particular document in early September. It has been in place since then. Um, so what you see here is the very same, same document. Concerning the hybrid model, uh, we know that hybrid includes an in-person component. Uh, Dr. McKenna has actually highlighted in several of his presentations as well, the groupings of students and who comes to school on what days. The days in school have been used to accommodate our students and staff to safety protocols, procedures and routines. Certainly, direct instruction is provided across the curriculum, but there are also opportunities for guided and independent practice. So one of the items to keep in mind, so for example, students are in school two days with our hybrid model and learning remotely for three days, is that the in-person days include a lot of different types of things going on. Approximately four hours and forty-five minutes is the length of the day. But that includes, as we mentioned, uh, different constructs. Some of it is direct instruction, some of it is more guided or independent learning that the students are doing. That comes in small groups, that comes in large groups, it is teacher-directed and the teacher provides the resources to the students. We're fortunate, as I had shared with you in one of our prior updates, our teachers have worked diligently over the last several months. And actually, this goes back to closure time in March, in the spring, already thinking about curricular and instructional priorities and shifts that needed to take place. And that has been done so in partnership with our district staff. So these endeavors have been months-long dialogue conversations and endeavors for planning purposes. At the elementary level, we do try to cohort students as much as possible when they're physically in the building. On the days they are not in school, Wednesday is a common day of instruction for both our hybrid and our remote learners. Teachers create and develop resources for students on the days that students are learning from home. These, again, are varied. Some of them are print-based, video-based or digital, and many times they anchor back to the instruction that occurred in the classroom. Practice and independent work is also part of what students do on these days. It is important to note, and I've also mentioned this item before, that both technology and non-technology related activities are part of student learning. Schools and teachers provide the actual schedule, calendars and agendas to parents. Mrs. Viger, you mentioned earlier about navigating resources and where to locate information. As you know, that was a tremendous discussion that was had way back, even when we think about the spring, and we have been working diligently, our schools, our teachers have been working diligently to make sure that that navigation is provided with as much clarity and consistency to the families as possible. So whether you have to go to a location for one child or multiple children, that it should be easy to find and locate. And we know that at the elementary level, one of the things we heard from our families is often times, it is not the parent who is helping the child to navigate the resources. And we are very mindful of a very flexible schedule as well. As far as remote learning, we know that our remote learners are learning from home. In this case, they are receiving instruction from a remote teacher. So this is a distinct difference than five through twelve. In this case, at the elementary level, teachers are assigned a class of remote students. And it may be one class or more than one, depending on how many learners there are at a given building. In this case, again, the planned learning times reflected in the Charter document has been provided so that there is some guidance for the teachers to go by. That came from recommendations that were from our remote learning committee. Here are several comments in several of our forums, some of our teachers had spoken to the Non-Debat Committee and Dr. McKenna was on it, Mr. Skanzuza and myself, along with other administrators as well as teachers, and that is where those numbers came from. The schedules that are included in the document are done so for illustration purposes only. So again, the actual schedules are provided at the building level by the teacher and the school. So in terms of both models, the commonalities are, is that both are dedicated, um, teachers from our district to teach the classes. They teach the same subject area, so our core subjects and all of the subjects you see reflected in our elementary setting, the same is true in both of the models. Reading is the foundation across the curriculum. Certainly that is true. We know that, especially from an elementary perspective. The same objectives, resources and materials are utilized. We have provided extensive materials from the district level. However, in addition, the teachers are expected to adapt learning and instruction and add to any materials that would help meet the needs of their students. That's teaching. So whether you're in person or remote, that is the expectation. Teachers do create the resources for students. Again, they come in many different formats. Pacing has been the same. And from our analysis, what we try very much to do is provide an equivalency of experience. Again, we recognize there are two different learning environments, but what has helped with this is teachers work collaboratively at the building level, across the grade levels to ensure that consistency exists between the models. So that when they are doing their planning, they are doing so together. Synchronous, asynchronous, independent and student support, as well as large group, small group and individual work is part of the landscape in both models. The actual timeframes are communicated by the teacher, and when it comes to direct instruction, it is not always contiguous. And that's really an important part, especially in elementary. We have some very young learners. It would not be possible or even reasonable in many cases to have students on for an extended period of time. So screen time and the learning process itself is something we honor very strongly when we're making plans of that nature. The daily schedule and the navigation of the agenda, as I mentioned, is provided by the teacher. However, the families, we encourage and we also certainly promote that there's flexibility to work in partnership with families, the teacher and the school. And as Mrs. Leatherbarrel mentioned earlier, encouraging communication between home and school is really critically important. So we have lots of tools, strategies and resources that we have provided. Our hope is that this has given, um, all of you and our view in public some additional information or information that is just perhaps a review nature for them at this time. My colleagues and I are happy to address any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Baylen. Any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, but, so I like that, you know, we, we were able to receive this and actually get the visual of it. I have just a couple of questions that have come to me from a couple of individuals that I know that have elementary school children. Is there guidance as to the amount of time when a student is at home doing the independent learning that they should be on the computer or basically learning? Is there a set amount of time? It might be, you know, grade level, grade one is something, grade two is something? I've heard a mixture. I've heard that some students do not have enough work and they're done within a half an hour on an at-home independent learning day. And then I've also heard that another student has so much work that they're, they're working for eight hours in a day as an elementary. So is there guidance on the amount of time based on the age?
There is actually guidance on our, in our document, along with the chart, uh, which indicates the synchronous and asynchronous of timeframes. The total time is also provided. I too have had conversations with our, some of our parents about the very question you're asking. And that happens to be true also in in-person setting. So in the case of, uh, you know, there certainly are situations, even within one family, um, you have a child who may be very proficient, let's say in math, and they essentially move quickly through the assignment that has been given. In another case, you have even sometimes within the same family, something that seems to be very laborious and takes an awful lot of time. I honestly believe in those cases, just like you would, you know, and hopefully we will get to the point where in a five-day, you know, attendance, like hopefully after all of this passes, you want to talk with your teacher. One of the things that we have asked, and this has been a discussion at elementary, I'll ask my colleagues to jump in there, is have some guidance for families on what to do in those cases. So certainly asking the teacher would be one, but in the case of not having enough work to do, if you finish, here are three things that you can do to supplement your learning. So I think that's the piece we are working on right now because it is hard to gauge, especially given the gap that March unfortunately provided for a lot of our learners. The case of how quickly one may be moving through things will vary. So I think it's incumbent on us, number one, to keep the communication going and number two, have resources that help support either one that's moving, let's say, a little bit more quickly or one that may need a little bit more support. So Andrew or Bill, if you want to offer anything on that topic. Thank you again for being here, both of you. Appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Baylen. I think you said it very well, is that for students that might not have enough to do, uh, we have developed a, a, a parent landing page, which has a tremendous amount of resources from our GT teacher or from our school social worker or, um, from our curriculum extension team that can extend a student's learning. Uh, certainly the classroom teacher is the first, uh, line in terms of what a student, what hybrid students will do independently on their days at home. And, and as, as Marie said, we really want to hear from parents on what's working, what's not working, and the teacher would be the first person who would need to hear that information so they can monitor and adjust. If they have a, a child who is overwhelmed, uh, that is the last thing that we want that will lead to frustration. We certainly want children to feel challenged, but we need them to feel... We certainly want children to feel challenged, but we need them to feel supported in that challenge. And if we're going to frustration, just like many of our homework conversations that we've had over the years, we need to hear about that and teachers need to put in additional supports so that students can feel successful because that is true. That would be the most important piece of all of this.
I would also offer, you know, whenever I can, you know, I'm living this too. So I understand where families are coming from and I have my own experience and I'm an educator. But I try to review my students, you know, my children's work at home after I get home from a day of work. And my husband is not an educator, so I do understand where people are coming from. It is a natural thing to experience, but we don't want them, as Andrew said, we don't want families to become frustrated. So the more that we can get communication from them and be able to work together, the better it is. And it comes in waves. There are going to be times that things seem very easy until you get to the challenge point. And there's nothing worse than a family feeling like they're at a loss and they don't want that. We're here to support them. We're here to work with them. So please reach out to us. Please reach out to the buildings. We really are here to help you.
And I will just say that I've had multiple people, I happen to have a lot of colleagues that their kids go to Williamson. And what I'm hearing is when they do communicate, I just have to applaud this district, yourself included. But what I'm hearing, because I reiterate, please reach out to me. Have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? Some have gone further, but they are coming back and saying they responded. I received a call back. So I think, back to Dr. McKenna, we're truly seeing this collaborative teamwork and the responsiveness. So I do appreciate that because we know things aren't going to be perfect. So we do want our families to communicate if something is working, you know, as well as when it's, of course, not working. But I do want to recognize the district for the great feedback I'm hearing with responding back to you. Like that means a lot to us. It really does.
You're right. Yes, you know, throughout the summer, talking about what this will look like, we had concerns about what's each appropriate elementary school students. And I think that this is really a great spot for our district and the work that has happened to our elementary students. The piece, what you mentioned, about working elaborately to make sure that this looks equitable for our remote and our hybrid kids really shows. I have a first grader and I was concerned about what the learning of home days would look like, particularly when we were treated back from parents. And of course, we compared in March of what this would be. But to make the shift to a day where children are on their two-off days, I've been so impressed with not only the amount of work that's come, that just seems just right and to the points that we heard. It's, at least what I am seeing, there's enough for my child, but there's extensions as well. And that's just what the classroom teacher. So when you look at the schedule, I guess one of the pieces that I'd love to see in the future, as you share like this, it's so nice to see the schedule, schedule made out. But I wonder, as we continue to revisit elementary in the middle of the time, if we can include more teacher artifacts or shows, particularly what families are seeing. Because I have the advantage of having a young child to see what the daily schedule looks like, what the slides look like. That my six-year-old can completely handle on his own. And he goes through and the links are there and it's age-appropriate language. And, you know, you're in the reading room for twenty minutes and there's all these wonderful, beautiful options on a different top. It's just outstanding, the work that our teachers are putting into to allow our kids who are home to really work independently. And that being said, yeah, there's challenges. The writing piece, by the way, the writing is so nice too. The kids are writing and keep their pencil at home and, you know, taking pictures, however, they're sharing it. But what takes my child probably forever to write two sentences, another child might do it in two minutes. So I think that's where we hear differences from parents, what takes a long, you know, our child has different strengths. And so I really appreciate the efforts that I can see happening. And I can see this also from an educator point of view, to differentiate, try and support the different needs that kids have on these days that they're not with their actual teacher. So that would just be my one suggestion. This is a great document. And then some of the piece that we've been looking for as far as what today in the life of a child.